At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for October 10th, 2023, beginning at 6:35. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustees may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or to be escorted out by the security attending this meeting. We welcome civic input, but we must insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Haynes in leading us in the pledges.
(inaudible) Give the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is a student performance. And, Mrs. Foster?
Hello, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Wertz, everyone here tonight watching online. It's going to be great. We have the Martin Jazz with us tonight. Hello, everyone. We heard y'all rehearsing, and we know it's going to be just absolutely spectacular. So, thanks for coming out. It's the first of the month, and we always do a student performance to kick the show off right. The Martin Jazz are an award-winning ensemble, obviously from Martin High School. They're under the direction of Kenny Ragland. They're very popular around town because we invite them to do things like play at board meetings, at school functions, come to awards ceremonies, but they're also invited by the community to participate. They do a lot of competitions. They're highly competitive, and I want to tell you, and this is great, they won grand champion at three festivals and placed second and third in others, so they're very, very well-known around the state. Many of the musicians have also won individual awards and honors at a variety of different festivals. In the spring of next year, Martin Jazz is going to have the honor of being the performance for the awards concert at the Highlander Jazz Festival, and that's a really big deal.
Y'all were fantastic. Thank you for that. What a great way to start our meeting. Thank you, absolutely. Thank you for being here, guys and girls. We appreciate you so much. That was just lovely. All right, next on our agenda is our October 2023 Student of the Month. Dr. Bowler?
All right, President Fowler, Dr. Wertz, members of the board, thank you for giving us this opportunity to recognize one of the many outstanding students that we have at Arlington College and Career High School. It's my pleasure to introduce the Student of the Month for our campus, Senior Montezar Mohammed. Montezar is a product of AISD and previously attended Bergen Elementary and Workman Junior High. He wanted to attend ACCHS because he realized the opportunity this school could provide for his future and because he wanted to be the first person in his family to attend college. Montezar has accomplished a great deal in his time at ACCHS. He has currently acquired 59 college credit hours, maintaining a perfect 4.0 GPA. This December, he will earn his college associate's degree five months before earning his high school diploma next May. His hard work has helped him to become a member of the Tarrant County College Dean's List, Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society, and last night was inducted to our own campus's National Honor Society. Since Montezar has also taken advantage of all opportunities to accelerate his learning, he is currently enrolled at UTA, taking a dual-credit chemistry course as a participant in our Titans Scholars Program. Outside of school, he has spent time volunteering for Mission Arlington, raising money for various charities, and currently participates in future leaders of medicine that has allowed him to acquire over 200 hours, virtually shadowing doctors and surgeons. Next year, Montezar wants to attend a four-year university to major in biochemistry, as he begins his pathway to eventually achieving his dream of becoming a neurosurgeon. His top university choices include Princeton, UT Austin, and Rice. Out of all the outstanding Titans at ACCHS, the teachers and administrators selected Montezar for this honor. Here's a brief summary of what they had to say about him. "Montezar's thirst for knowledge and commitment to intellectual growth is truly commendable. His enthusiasm for learning inspires his peers to be better versions of themselves. He is honest, responsible, and always displays integrity in his actions. His dedication and outstanding character set him apart as a top student and a truly exceptional individual. We're very proud of Montezar and can't wait to see what he will achieve in the future." Join me in congratulating Montezar Mohammed.[626.66][626.66](applause)
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Montezar Mohammed, and it's very honorable to be here as Student of the Month for October.
Well, we are just thrilled to have you, and you are an incredible young man. Would you like to introduce the people that are with you?
Yes. My father, Safa Mohammed, my little brother, Hussein Mohammed, and my older brother, Saif Arubayi.
Well, I can only imagine how proud they are of you, because we are AISD, proud of you. You are the kind of student that makes us proud, Mohammed. We appreciate you being here. May Dr. Wertz and I come down and give you something?
I really appreciate it.[673.32][673.32](laughter)
What are you going to do if somebody ever says no?[679.61][679.61](laughter) We have a very special pin that we would like to present to you. This is our AISD pin, and if you look around, all the trustees are wearing theirs, and not just anyone gets this pin, just special people. And we appreciate you. You make us so proud, and we would be proud if you would wear this pin. Thank you so much.
Every time you're doing surgery, you're going to have to wear one of those pins.[719.13][719.13](laughter) So, we also have a plaque. We're actually, what would you call this? It's not a plaque? I guess it is a plaque, that honors you as Student of the Month, and I just want to tell you how proud we are of you. We're excited to hear about your aspirations and to see where you go, and we're going to be watching, so have a, continue to make us proud. Thank you so much.[738.69][738.69](applause)
We will. I know. Thank you. What an incredible young man. Aren't we proud? Aren't we proud that he is here in AISD, and I know that he will continue to make us proud in the years to come? What an incredible young man. We are now ready for our Community Powered by Possibilities Award of Appreciation. Mr. Peralas?
Good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Wertz, members of the board. Once again, it's an honor and a privilege and a pleasure to say thank you to our community. We are blessed to have such a giving community that supports us every day. Today, we get to celebrate a partner, a partner that's been working with us for at least the last 10 years, the Kroger Company. The Kroger Company's Dallas Division has directly supported our Arlington ISD by providing resources and employment opportunities for students. Over the past 10 years, Kroger has hosted the Backpack Boosters Campaign, an annual event that supports thousands of students across the DFW area. The campaign leverages the support of Kroger staff and their customers during the month of July to raise funds for the purchase of school supplies to share with students at the beginning of the school year. The supplies are individually boxed, include essential items that help students begin the school year with the resources they need to succeed in school. This past August, Kroger delivered to Arlington ISD 2,500 individually boxed student supply boxes. Just in the past five years, Kroger has distributed to Arlington ISD nearly 20,000 of these boxes. That equates to about $200,000 worth of school supplies for our students. Phenomenal. In the area of employment opportunities, we know that we have many of our students that seek and attain employment at our local grocery, Kroger grocery stores during the summer. This includes Kroger providing a workplace option for our students in our AISD 18-plus program. Our 18-plus program is a community-based vocational training support option for a student eligible for special education services who needs assistance in obtaining and maintaining employment in the community as part of their vocational supports. And Kroger Grocery opens their doors to give our students a workplace experience. They also support our Summer Youth Development Program, which is a program for 14- to 17-year-olds seeking experience in the workplace as well. Historically, Kroger Grocery has been a supporter of our students and work, has been a supporter of our students and work programs, providing a workplace environment for students where students can refine their skills and gain experience. For their continued support and dedicated engagement with Arlington ISD and our community, we present the Community Powered by Possibilities Award of Appreciation to the Kroger Company. And my colleague here that I've had a chance to work with over the past few years is Tanya Keambau, and she is the Kroger Dallas Division Assistant Communications Manager to accept.[1010.38][1010.38](applause)
Thanks so much, Erin, and thanks for having us here. The foundation of our business and the success of this campaign would not be possible without the generosity of our customers, our amazing passionate associates, and great community partners like Arlington ISD, so we're so appreciative to be here.
Well, we appreciate you and Kroger, and I know our students are grateful for all the supplies over the years that you have provided for them, saving families a lot of money and time in shopping for these supplies, and we are so appreciative of you and the Kroger Foundation for what you do for our students. May we come down and present you with the award?
Yes, of course. Thank you so much.[1053.83][1053.83](music)
On behalf of Arlington ISD, we want to express our appreciation. You know, the school business is a community business. We could not do what we do without your support, and what you've done for all of our students makes it possible for them to have meaningful learning in the classroom, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Can we get a picture with you?
Next on our agenda is the Open Forum for Agenda Items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on the agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net. Board meeting speaker requests no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we have two registered speakers for agenda items.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. We will start with Daniel Bennett. Mr. Bennett?
This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aim that an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for an open forum. You will have two minutes to speak. Ms. Forsberg will notify you when your time is up. Please end your presentation.
Before you start time, because it is an agenda item, can someone ask me a question? Because this is on the agenda, so I can't have a conversation, correct? If someone chooses to?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You may begin.
My name's Daniel Bennett. I live in White Settlement. I see that the TAD appraisal nomination's on your agenda tonight. I have been going to these TAD meetings since 2016. I have seen many, many things. The most, I'm going to say not the most inattentive board that we have currently has led to the resignation of the chief appraiser, resignation of the head of admin, the resignation or the firing of Kyle Wood, the IT. And all this stuff is related, because Mr. Pampa, and he's here tonight, defended Ms. Wildman's actions at Keller. Keller recalled her, and he went there and said, "The job is not to manage the district." And I think what he meant to say is the day-to-day activities. But in the property tax code, it says you are to govern. That has never come, oh, I've never heard that. When he first got on the board, he said, "It's our job to oversee the chief appraiser and do a budget." That's it. Well, all these other things, this blind support of Mr. Law, and the confidence vote three weeks prior to his resignation, the guy only gave two days. Everything that's been presented to this board, only two individuals on that board took it to heart and could actually see what was going on. It took, it took getting one of the IT people on an open mic to really show the culture, and it's not Monday quarterbacking, as Mr. Pampa said during the meeting. This is something I have been demonstrating to the board week, month in, month out, and he's the only one that couldn't see it. I'm asking you not to nominate him. I believe there's a Gerald Miller here tonight. He's been going to these meetings for a year and a half. He's accomplished, he's engaged, and he understands what standard operating procedures are, and he also understands that you need policy and procedures in place, which TAD does not have. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I now would like to call Gerald Miller.
Is there somebody who can end?
Ms. Forsberg?
Here's what I found.
Welcome, Mr. Miller.
Good evening, board. Although I'm not an AISD affiliate, I grew up literally about half a mile from here. As a matter of fact, I've long supported AISD schools, and last year, Martin actually won a jazz competition, which I donated unreleased CDs from my record label to, that stuff from Ellis Marcellus that had yet to be released, so I have always supported y'all. I'm not going to go into everything, but I have a background in music, five-time Grammy, two-time Latin Grammy, award-winning record label. I've managed artists like Lauryn Hill, worked with people like Beyonce, Biggie Smalls, Janet Jackson. You can Google me, find out everything you want to know. I don't hide from nobody, don't owe no taxes. So, but I'm here because about, in 2018, I moved primarily back to Texas, although I have my office still in New York with my staff, and I discovered, began to discover some improprieties that were going on at TAD. So, like a conscientious citizen, I began to talk to other civil servants and other people in the industry, and I just really began to work for change at this point in my life. I've done everything that I dreamed of, and I came back home to settle, to give back to the community that's given so much to me. And that led me to take some classes that were offered by the State Comptroller's Office for the PTAD, and I wanted to see what the functions of the board were, what the rules were, what the requirements, what was expected of them, what they could do and couldn't do, so I could better understand what was going on inside the activities and things inside the board. Well, needless to say, it was a mess. It was a hot mess. Every news media outlet put me on TVs talking, and you have my information, you can see my qualifications, and I'd be honored to accept the nomination and the votes of this esteemed body to the TAD board to help change the culture and work for the citizens of all of Tarrant County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Wertz?
All right, thank you, President Fowler. Tonight, we've invited back Ms. Vanessa Vasquez. The board actually previously ratified Mrs. Vasquez's appointment to assistant principal at Arlington High, but she was on a fun-filled trip, and she wasn't able to be recognized, so we have invited her back so that she could be recognized. So, if you wouldn't mind standing, Ms. Vasquez, I'm going to talk a little bit about you. Ms. Vasquez actually came, initially, she started in Garland ISD as a fifth-grade bilingual science teacher, and then moved to Mansfield ISD, where she served as a bilingual teacher, an avid teacher, and an ESL instructional specialist. She came to the World Languages Department here in Arlington as a world language ESL specialist, and then she moved to Arlington High School as a restorative practices specialist, and now is the assistant principal. She got her bachelor's of science degree at UTA in interdisciplinary studies, and she received her master of education from the University of Texas at Arlington in curriculum instruction. So, congratulations. It's been an honor working with you.
Thank you for having me back.[1584.11][1584.11](applause)
Did you want to introduce anyone that might be with you?
Sure. Well, my family, my dad, and my stepmother, my brother, my husband, my best friend, my daughters, and my mother, and of course, my colleagues, and my great leader.
She's like, yeah, 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 whatever.[1608.11][1608.11](applause) Well, we are just so very pleased to have you in this district and in your new position at Arlington High, and we know that you will be successful and add a lot to Arlington High. We have a backdrop outside. If you would like to step out there with your friends and family, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for having me back.[1629.15][1629.15](applause)
Next on the agenda, we're going to consider action item eight. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. Tonight, the board has the opportunity to nominate a candidate for the Tarrant Appraisal District's Board of Directors, and that opportunity for the board is tonight to consider.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Do I have a motion for the resolution? Dr. Raish?
Thank you, President Fowler. It is the responsibility of this board, as a governing body of the district and a taxing authority, to, when opportunities arise and present themselves, to cast our nominations and then later votes for individuals to serve on the Tarrant Appraisal District Board. And one of such opportunities does exist now, and we, as a board, historically, our goal is to make sure that we nominate and support somebody that has the best interest of the school district and best interest of our taxpayers in the district at heart. And so, there's many individuals, I believe, that are probably are interested in this. There is one name this evening that I would like to read as a resolution, so a motion in the form of a resolution. So, unless there's discussion at this point, I'd like to go ahead and do that. So, I move that the board adopt this resolution, which states, "Whereas the Arlington Independent School District taxing entity has determined its preference for the representative to the Board of Directors of the Tarrant Appraisal District, now therefore be it resolved that the Arlington Independent School District taxing entity does hereby nominate Gloria Penya, 5102 Oak Gate Court, Arlington, Texas 76016, as a member of the Board of Directors of the Tarrant Appraisal District, and that a copy of this resolution be mailed to Chief Appraiser, Tarrant Appraisal District, 2500 Handley, Edreville Road, Fort Worth, Texas 76118."
Thank you, Dr. Raish. I have a motion from Dr. Raish. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second from Mr. Will Banks. Do we vote? Please vote. Please vote.
Row call.
Oh, row call. We'll start with Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, vote yes.
Sarah McMurro, I vote yes.
Justin Choppa, I vote yes.
LeAnn Haynes, I vote yes.
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Richardson.
Brooklyn Richardson, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
All vote in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is action item B. Dr. Wertz.
This action is to consider approving a resolution earnest money contract for acquisition of real property described as approximately 1.713 acres of land out of approximately 21.832 acre tract of land known as Block 1 Lot 1 AR 1R of the Fielder Road Baptist Church Edition in Arlington. And tonight, this action has been brought to you to consider a resolution regarding the earnest money for the contract and acquisition of this property. And Mr. Horn is here to share some details and to answer any questions that you may
Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Wertz. So I believe you've read through the packets, so I won't go through all the details, but if you would like, I can share a little bit more information about this particular property. We've been working previously with Dr. Cavassos and myself, with the president for the church and pastors at the church, to secure an additional 1.713 acres adjacent to our property that currently, or currently houses the old admin building, or the counts building, as we refer to it. And so that particular piece of property and that addition of the acreage will allow us to use that particular site for future uses, potentially for schools and so forth. And then probably the most notable piece of that, in addition to the additional acreage there, which would give us approximately 10 acres, which is about the size you would want for a typical elementary school, that also gives us a very valuable curb cut, as we call it, onto State Highway 303 or Pioneer Parkway. That's probably the single most important part of this particular purchase for us. It does kind of, if you will, square off that property or that site for us, to give us a larger site, potentially for an elementary school, but it gives us immediate access onto 303, which is very difficult to do. If you remember, when we purchased the site in the entertainment district that we use now for the CVPA and the athletic center, we had to create curb cuts onto State Highway 180, or Division Street, as we call it here in Arlington. And that process is about a two-year process. It's also, it's very difficult to cut into or onto a state highway. So by doing this, it allows us that additional land that we need, but it also gives us that very valuable curb cut, and that's what's most important for us. So with that said, I'll be happy to answer any of the questions you might have this evening.
Do we have any trustees with questions? Thank you, Mr. Horn.
Thank you very much.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Will Banks?
Yes, President Fowler. At this time, I'd like to...
I believe you have a speaker on this item, so you should let the speaker talk before you have your motion, if that's the case.
It's for a different item. Thank you. All right, I have a motion from Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second?
Wait, wait. I need to read the motion. I move to approve the resolution authorizing and directing the president of the Board of Trustees to execute any and all instruments appropriate or necessary for the acquisition of real property described as approximately 1.713 acres of land out of an approximate 21.832 acre tract of land known as Block 1 Lot 1 AR 1R of the Fielder Road Baptist Church Edition, Arlington, Tarrant County, Texas 76013, locally known as 1323 West Pioneer Parkway, Arlington, Texas 76013.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I have a motion from Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. McMurro. Please vote.
Aaron Reich.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Sarah McMurro, I vote yes.
Justin Choppa, I vote yes.
LeAnn Haynes, I vote yes.
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Brooklyn Richardson, and I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes. Motion carries.
And I want to jump back for a minute. I failed to call on someone that was here. Mr. Tony Pampa, would you step forward for just a few words?
Thank you, President Fowler. Dr. Wertz, kind of cool seeing you back there. Very good. Feels like coming home, but you guys have sure upgraded a bit since I was at a board meeting last time. This place is really nice. Just wanted to say thank you for the trust, the confidence to appoint me to the TAD board for the last couple of years. Didn't know a whole lot when Mr. Boyhogg called to sell me on the idea of serving on that board. Learned a lot, and I know that you hear a lot of things, and I've had conversations with you one-on-one about what's going on at TAD. You know, there are some things that need to be fixed, but you got the role, you got the role on time. Those things that we're supposed to do are done well. I think what I've learned the most is that you have some very dedicated workers, just like your staff here at the district, that get up every day and show up and do the best job that they can, and they deserve good leadership. It was because Gloria Peña was willing to serve on this board that I agreed to not run for this position again. So I'm glad that you nominated her. I think she'll do a great job. Like me, she doesn't probably know a ton about property appraisals and things like that, but she knows about governance. She knows about setting budgets. She knows about leadership, and so I think she'll do a great job. We do have some work to do, and I think in terms of a chief appraiser, we'll probably get that person hired by the end of the year before the new board takes place, because otherwise, we'll just take too long. And so our goal is to get that done, and so hopefully by the time the new board comes in, some of those things will have settled down. So just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate your confidence again, and I'm glad I don't have to do this again. Any questions for me?
Thank you so much, Mr. Pampa, and we appreciate all that you've done for the past years representing us and doing such a good job on the board. Please know how much we appreciate you, and thank you also for your time as serving as a trustee on the AISD board. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd love to stay the rest of the day, but I got a real cute girl over at Piccolamondo waiting for me, so I'm going to go have dinner with my wife. Go have a good night. Thanks.
We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda? We have a motion from Ms. Haynes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second for Mr. Choppa. Please vote.
Aaron Reich, vote yes.
Sarah McMurro, I vote yes.
Justin Choppa, I vote yes.
LeAnn Haynes, I vote yes.
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Brooklyn Richardson, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes. Thank you. Motion carries.
We're now ready for discussion eight.
Thank you, President Fowler. So each year, we conduct a staff survey where we look at different questions, and this last year, we conducted a survey with our staff to really investigate teacher retention and staff satisfaction. And so tonight, we have Dr. Natalie Lopez here with us this evening to share the results of that survey and to answer questions. Dr. Lopez.
President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Wertz, thank you for your time this evening. I'm going to be sharing the results of the 2223 AISD staff survey. At the beginning of the 2223 school year, we decided to redevelop our annual district-wide surveys, collect more actionable insights from stakeholders. So between October and February, we collected feedback about teacher retention and campus climate from various stakeholders through focus groups, one-on-one interviews, surveys of central administrators, campus administrators, principals, included in the campus administrator category, teachers, parents, and, yeah, I believe that covers all the groups that we met with. And so what you'll see is that the themes and ideas elevated from those focus groups are across the survey, and you will see some of that throughout the slide deck. The goal of the redesign was to identify more pertinent areas of inquiry that we could act on to improve employee satisfaction, reduce respondent fatigue from prior year's surveys that were like over 100 items long, and then abide by best practices in survey and questionnaire development. So what you're going to see, or what you're going to hear, is we talk about staff survey factors, and so that's a process. So the development of the factors is kind of like categories, grouping categories, and that, like I said, came from focus groups and themes that were extracted from what stakeholders are having to say about just their experience in the district. We then did a literature review of valid and reliable scales that should be used in order to ask those questions appropriately, did an item bank development that started with hundreds of items from variously, or a variety of sources for basically research-based survey items that are asked and worded appropriately. So it's not like we just went and constructed items ourselves. These were items that were polled from existing research that showed that they are credible. And then we administered the survey after senior staff approval of the items, the constructs, and the timeline. Once the data was collected from the survey that we administered, we conducted an exploratory factor analysis, and what, basically what that does, it's like a way to group items into category, and so that you're seeing not just how people respond to one item, but how do they respond to multiple items that might be in that same type of category. And so we removed any poor-performing items that didn't have a strong factor loading into a category, because basically that item's poor performing, it doesn't give you any information. And then we refined any existing, I'm calling them categories, but any existing factors that we had started with experimentally. We believed that these items will inform these factors, and then just refined that. But there wasn't actually, there wasn't much on that because the items performed so well. And then, so we ended up creating factor score average from, there's nine from the survey, and so I just kind of wanted to give you a background on how that was created. Moving into the sample characteristics for the staff members that took the survey. So respondent snapshot shows the staff by job role and then the staff by their work area. So if we just look at job role, then 4% of the respondents were administration, 53% were teachers, and then the remaining 43% were support staff. That's just by job role, regardless of the level. Looking at staff by work area or level, 18% were central administration, and 45% were elementary, 14% were junior high, and then 23% were high school. We have those two categories, but we actually also have a table that shows you by job role and by work area. So you'll notice that 45, or excuse me, 43, 53% of the respondents were teachers, and 45% of the respondents were at the elementary level, okay? So if I want to know, well, how many of the teachers were elementary teachers, then I can further show the disaggregation. And so 26.7% of the respondents were elementary teachers, and then 8.1% were junior high teachers, 17.9% were high school teachers. Then move into the next combination of job role and work area. So that information is presented there. Our overall response rate, though, was 30.8%. And looking at the tables that we're going to show, there are pretty small samples of junior high administrators and high school administrators. I mean, you can see that they didn't even reach 1%. And so just be careful withdrawing any conclusions based on those subgroup averages, because they have less than 30 respondents. And then so just throughout the slide deck, it's, I don't want to say it's, I don't want to discredit the feedback on there, but our junior high administrators are extremely happy, the 12 that responded, and so it's not necessarily generalizable. Okay, so going to move into the domains and factors, and these are, again, the categories that are within the survey and that we were informed by the way that respondents answered each of the items. So I'll review the domains and then the subfactors that were informed. So we were looking at overall employee retention and satisfaction, and the domains that basically kind of like that large grouping of the information was, there were three of them. It was psychological safety, campus safety and working conditions, and then data-driven decision-making. Within each domain, there are factors that are like a more nuanced category, and so it's just not as broad. And so within psychological safety, there are leadership awareness, culture of feedback, and strategic communication. Then within the second domain, there are the factors, and then the third domain has its own factors. So just to give you a little bit of information about the three domains, that the orange section at the top. So psychological safety, the definition there is the degree to which people view the environment as conducive to interpersonally risky behavior like speaking up or asking questions, asking for help. The second domain is campus climate and working conditions, and that's going to be the presence of any delinquent activity, witnessing of threats and harm, and then confidence and procedures established to address safety or discipline. And then that third domain is data-driven decision-making. So basically, the use of data to identify patterns and performance, that reveals students that maybe academic strengths and weaknesses relative to established learning goals, and then the planning of instructional practices to support academic success for all students. So domain similar to a construct, basically an idea or a theory containing various conceptual elements. And so, and then in our case, these domains were informed by that exploratory factor analysis, as well as the factors within each of the domains. So what you're going to see on the tables that follow are disaggregation categories, and so we've disaggregated by job role and by work area. And we talked, I talked about the sample characteristics, the job role, were they a teacher, administrator, support staff, and then by work area or level. So on the table, it's kind of like a two-by-two, so you'll see whether they were overall, a teacher, an administrator, or a support staff. Overall is going to be all of those things. And then by work area, you'll see district, which is anybody in the district regardless of level, then elementary, junior high, and high school. And then this is just some average interpretation guidance. So as you're viewing the graphs, keep in mind, values above like 3.5 or above, those are, I mean, that's predominantly favorable and positive. That's a good outcome. Three to 3.49, that's an area where, you know, intervention may be necessary, you want to look further into that. And then values less than three indicate areas where intervention is strongly recommended. And again, that's on the factors, not individual items. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and move into the first domain. This is psychological safety. And there are three factors within psychological safety, so leadership awareness, culture of feedback, and strategic communication. The first of those factors is leadership awareness, and the items grouped into leadership awareness factors are shown here. I'm not going to read each of these items to you, but these are the individual survey items. So questions like, "My campus or department leader is an ongoing presence, someone who's readily available. It's clear what my objectives are, what I'm supposed to accomplish at my job. My campus department leader initiates meetings to discuss team progress." So items like that. And so the definition of leadership awareness is shown, and you're going to see the definition of the factors on each of the slides. And so that is, leadership awareness is a leader's awareness of their colleague's thoughts, feelings, and stress levels, and their ability to act as necessary to promote team success. So the district overall value for this factor was a 3.7, and that's favorable. So that district overall... So that district overall value is that very first blue bar in that very first section of the bar graph. Elementary staff was equal, that's the second, excuse me. Elementary staff was equal to overall value. That's the second bar, the orange one, 3.7 also. Slightly higher, because there's some rounding going on there. And then the junior high and the high school values were slightly lower, still mostly in the favorable region because they're above 3.5. High school's slightly under that. So if you want to get into the subsets, combinations of the work area and the job role, that's the remaining sections on this graph. So looking into the second set of bars, that's going to be teachers. The third set of bars, administration. And then the fourth set of bars is support staff at the various levels. So if I was to like zoom in and look at a particular bar, what I see here is this orange bar in the second section, and the value there is 3.6. And that value represents teachers that are elementary, because I'm in the teacher section, and the color is orange. And so you can see from the legend that orange is elementary. So I'm not going to go through every single one of those data points because we have eight more graphs, but I just wanted you to orient yourselves to the way that the data is laid out. The next second factor under psychological safety is culture of feedback. And items that are grouped in this factor are shown. So culture of feedback is if I make a mistake, my campus department doesn't hold it against me, my skills and talents are leveraged at my campus or department. It's easy to ask staff on my campus or department for help. Let's hear some example items. And so the culture of feedback definition is the environment in which an individual feels safe to share and receive feedback, and where employees receive encouragement to realize their full potential. And so on this, overall for the district, the value is 3.8. So again, in the favorable region. If I want to see just elementary, it's also a 3.8. So all elementary staff, so equal to the district. 3.7 for junior high, and then 3.6 for high school. So an example of the small sizes having fluctuating wildly is that green bar there in the third section in administration. So the junior high administrators very strongly, the 12 very strongly rated the culture of feedback at their campuses. So not to discredit that, but just they're a small, a small sample within the respondent pool. But that's great, because they're enjoying themselves. The third and final factor under psychological safety is strategic communication. So example items for this factor are shown. So it's easy to obtain expert assistance or support when something arises that I cannot or do not know how to handle. Achieving the campus's goals or department's goals is well within reach. Developments and changes to plans that may affect my work are communicated to me in advance. So items such as that. And overall, for the district, we are at 3.6, again, in that favorable region. And regardless of the subset, all are within the favorable region, actually, with the exception of the high school support staff, that gold bar at the very end. They're just under favorable. And I apologize. Strategic communication definition is the distribution and receipt of information through proper channels to the appropriate people and at the right time. So that's the overall factor definition. We're going to move into the second domain, which is perceived campus safety and working conditions. So that's that presence of delinquent activity, witnessing of threats and harms, and belief in procedures established to handle safety and discipline. And so that's that middle section. There are three factors below this domain. It's violence, delinquent activity, and procedural effectiveness. So the first factor, violence. Here are some sample items there. I've witnessed parents committing verbal violence against teachers. I've witnessed students committing verbal violence against teachers, witnessing physical violence, examples like that. And so violence, the presence or threat of physical aggression, verbal aggression, or possession of weapons on a campus. Now, it's important to note the, these factors are reverse-coded. The items within this factor are reverse-coded because you, it's not good for there to be violence. It's not good for there to be verbal aggression. So if you've seen that, that's not a good thing, and that's reverse-coded. So higher scores then on this factor are associated with less violence. So just want to make that note, that a 3.9 does not mean there's a lot of violence that's been witnessed. It actually means the opposite. Okay. And so you can see that overall for the district, the total value there is 3.9 in the favorable range. And then regardless of how you look at level or work area, it's all within the favorable range. There is no central admin horizontal dashed line on this because central administrators are not on a campus. They cannot, they don't witness violence from students, parents, et cetera, for the most part. All right, moving into the second factor, and that is delinquent activity. So there's only three items here on our campus. There are incidents of theft, there's drugs, or there is gang activity. And again, reverse-coded, so higher scores are associated with less perception of delinquent activity, which is the presence of illicit student behavior on, or conduct on a campus. Probably not surprising that the high school, the gold bars are all under the, the overall total. So like overall for the district, it's 3.7. And you notice the jump to elementary, 4.3. So not seeing a lot of delinquent activity. Drops at junior high, and then drops even further at high school. That wasn't surprising, but just to note. And then the third factor, procedural effectiveness. There were four items on this. So example, my campus has a functioning collaborative approach to discipline that provides adequate support for safety issues. My campus leaders ensure safe campus conditions. I know what to do in a lockdown. And so procedural effectiveness is the degree to which a prescribed set of campus safety action steps or guidelines achieve their intended objectives or the desired outcome. And then overall, district total 3.6 in the favorable range. And then a similar relationship where it's higher in elementary and then drops as we move into the high school, but definitely not as drastic. The third domain, and the last, is data-driven decision-making. So the use of data to identify patterns or performance that reveals student strengths and weaknesses relative to goals, and then the planning of instructional practices to support academic success. There are three factors within this domain. So data anxiety, data interpretation, and then data application. So the first factor of this third domain is data anxiety. There's only two items. I'm intimidated by the process of connecting data analysis to my instructional practice. And then I'm concerned I will appear incompetent when it comes to data-driven decision-making. Reverse-coded, we don't want there to be data anxiety, right? So a higher score means there's less anxiety. That's the general discomfort one may experience when engaging with data-driven decisions. And overall for the district, 3.8. So in the favorable range. And then regardless of level, elementary, junior high, or high school, overall, at those levels, in the favorable range. High school support staff does dip under that 3.5, but that's the only, the only subset. And then the second factor is data interpretation. So three items there. I'm confident in my ability to understand assessment reports. I'm confident in my ability to interpret updated student performance levels. I'm confident that I know what types of data reports I need to assess individual student performance. And so that data interpretation, the ability to comprehend student performance data, we are very good. We feel strong about this data interpretation. So I mean, this was one of the highest factors. Overall for the district, 4.3, so way beyond favorable range. And then, again, those junior high administrators, I mean, they have, they have a perfect score on this. But not to, you know, take away from it. It's favorable across the board. And then the third is data application. So six items here. I won't read all these, but I'm confident in my ability to understand assessment reports. I'm confident in my ability to interpret updated student performance levels. I know what types of data reports I need to assess individual performance, my ability to understand, et cetera. And so data application, the ability to use data to drive those instructional decisions. Very strong on this one also. So 4.2 for overall for the district, and then strong regardless of level, elementary, junior high, or high school. Everybody is in the favorable range, however you look at the different subsets. And recall, we were looking at obtaining an overall employee retention and satisfaction index, or like a value. So index is a metric that measures employee satisfaction determined by responses from different items, not the ones that we reviewed on the last couple of slides, but related to an employee's expression of their organizational commitment. And so the items are shown. So would you apply to your current position again? Why or why not? Could you see yourself leaving this organization or campus or department? Why or why not? I plan on working for AISD for, and then they were given options for years in ranges. And I would encourage a friend to work here, just yes or no. And so the employee retention and satisfaction index, intent to continue working in AISD. Overall, for the district, very strong. And it was 3.8, so in the favorable range. Did dip below 3.5 on one. And that area was elementary administration, but every other subset was in the favorable range. And then so analysis was done to look at predictors then of the employee retention and satisfaction index. Predictors being the, the factors that we reviewed. How do those factors relate to how this index was scored? And so for novice teachers, those are teachers who have a year or less experience, the strongest predictor of a high retention and satisfaction index score was leadership awareness. That's, I don't think that's very surprising that you feel more positive, you're satisfied when you have a leader that is, knows what's going on, supports, communicates. And so that's connected to their, the teacher's perception of their leaders being visible, supportive problem solver, and then strategically, strategically improving processes. But we also looked at just teachers in general, not just novice teachers. And for teachers in general, the analysis shows the strongest predictor of high retention and satisfaction values is good strategic communication. So knowing what to do, the appropriate person at the right time. And then the strongest predictor of low retention and satisfaction scores is when there's high delinquent activity. So that, that's more the quantitative aspect of, of the survey. And so we'll move into the qualitative piece. And just, there are confidentiality commitments, ethical obligations to maintain confidentiality and anonymity, have respect for the persons and the, the way that they respond. You want to make sure that there's trust and that there's not harm, that nobody has retaliation for something that they might openly and transparently say in an open-ended comment. Sometimes it's, it's easy, it might be easy to identify who a person is based on a response to an open-ended item. So the actual quotes themselves will not be shared, were not given to anyone in the district or outside of, of our department. And so this is just a screenshot of what were staff told and communicated before they began to take the survey. And so this is basically, they were told their responses would be kept confidential and anonymous. So one of the first open-ended items was, please tell us any concern you have about your personal safety on campus. And again, themes that were extracted from focus groups with the various groups in the district. And so one of them, one of the larger themes was personal safety. And top concern, 412 people discussed that, or shared that it was regarding student behavior. So general behavior, anywhere from something that just maybe classroom management all the way to violence directed at either peers or instructional staff and/or an employee. The next is the lack of consequence for student behavior. 181 responses came in about that when students misbehave, they, they don't feel that there's appropriate consequence regardless of the severity of the incident. And then finally, support. 90 people commented that they don't have adequate support to maintain their personal safety on their campus. The next question that was open-ended, what do you consider to be the most challenging aspect of your position? And so 391 respondents talked about student behavior. Again, anywhere from general to violence, to bodily harm, fighting, and maybe not to the person themselves, fighting between students, the student behavior. And so not necessarily, again, not necessarily severe or fighting, but just in general student behavior, talking, being disruptive during instructional time, so things like that. The next highest item that was discussed, 385 participants spoke about workload, and then role clarity. There was a lot of voicing that the, the job, because of all the things that have to, have to be done, it's, it's challenging. And so that could be within, and it could be a process. It could be mandatory paperwork required by TEA. I mean, so things that are just on their, on their plate. The third is lack of consistent support from campus, district staff, or federal. And so 218 people talked about just anxiety with, with the bureaucratic requirement. So a little bit of that, it's a example, mandatory tutoring, and then logging that tutoring, and then on top of the things that you already have to be doing. So some of the stuff that is kind of top-down is overwhelming. Challenging to meet students' needs. It feels like there's more and more that teachers have to give. And so that could be social, emotional, linguistic, cultural, material needs. So psychological, all that's very challenging. It feels like possibly, it's just overwhelming to give and to feel like you've accomplished what you're supposed to be doing. 119 people talked about communication. Aspects of maybe either the quality or the frequency of communication, and that's within just the district, can be a challenge. So not talking about communication with parents, but within the campus or the district. 118 people talked about district demands and then policy implementation. So again, frequency, quality of initiatives, whether they're implemented with fidelity, how to do them PD and training, that it's either ineffective or there's too much of it. And so that just encompassed kind of any general comments about district demands. The 113 people talked about difficult parent interactions. Interacting and communicating with parents is a challenge, including not just verbal, but sometimes physical violence. And then general burnout. 100 people just mentioned burnout. Explicit expressions of feeling burnout or isolation. There's no work, work-life balance, wanting to leave the profession. Not necessarily the district, but just being a teacher or being an educator has just become, it's just burned me out. All right, the third question is, could you see yourself leaving this organization, campus, or department? Why or why not? So respondents could have answered yes and, yes but, no and, no but. And so just kind of tried to capture the, the positive and then capture the, the negative. So top five reasons respondents would leave, so people that said they could see themselves leaving the organization, general personal motivation. So 273 respondents talked about just a personal issue related to leaving. So convenience, maybe it's a far drive, or limited career alternatives. There's, they need work-life balance. Maybe it's a health issue or a career trajectory. I'm more likely to get a promotion somewhere else, something like that. The second reason, 106 people talked about retirement. Yes, I can see myself leaving because I'm approaching my retirement goals. That makes sense? 104 people talked about pay and benefits. So educators are underpaid, or the benefits are not good. 103 people mentioned workload, and that's just overwhelming. It's unmanageable. Then 101 people talked about student and parent behaviors. So just kind of negative interactions there, whether it's verbal, or physical, or psychological. And then policies and procedures. 101 people mentioned dissatisfied with something that's currently in place, either at the campus or the district. That could be instructionally, discipline, communication, anything in those areas. But a larger majority had positive things and want to stay. And, and so top five reasons respondents would stay. So 685. So 685 people talked about general satisfaction and impact opportunities, value the opportunity to support others and just to be an educator, to make an impact on others' lives, and to do something positive for the greater community and the greater good. 442 people talked about their coworker relationships in their environment, that they love working with their peers and they love being at their campus. 287 people talked about their care for students. So their, the joy that they have interacting and, and teaching students. 178 people talked about leadership and support, and they expressed positive interactions with their leadership or their administrators and any support that they're receiving. And then 91 people talked about passion for a specific content or grade level. They have passion, I love teaching math and, and that's why I'm staying. And so things like that, so. So key findings, areas of recognition, overall employee retention and satisfaction score is high and in the favorable range. Very highly favorable scores across the data-driven decision-making factors and then that particular domain. And then a mission-driven staff. They love students and community and very passionate about their work with their campus So opportunities for improvement, district or campus-led discipline and safety initiatives. Examples would include implementation and enforcement of consequences. Opportunities for improvement, the second piece, that teacher workload and role clarity. And then bidirectional communication of district or campus policies and procedures, initiative implementation, feedback, et cetera. As soon as the opportunities for improvement were shared, the district began working on a plan for either short-term and long-term. And so some of this, it takes a little bit more time to put strategies into place. Other pieces of this were immediate, and immediate action has been taken. You want to meaningfully address issues with a robust process, but, but if, if somebody says they are overwhelmed and they need clarity on discipline policies, well, that's, that's definitely being acted on. So behavior interventionists in the PDIS department have met with all the principals, each campus, and asked, interviewed, what exactly do you need? How often do you need it? And, and what would you like, what would you like me to do while I'm here? And then there have been 150 already in the month of September, classroom observations where the behavior interventionist is going into bridge and new teacher classrooms, observing and then providing immediate feedback to the teacher. And then the teacher has the option to do follow-up, come back out to my classroom and revisit this with me. Or if your recommendation is that I do this, can you come back and observe that I'm doing it in that way? And so that has already taken place. And the focus group conversations related to discipline, that, that very first bullet and that focus group theme extraction, those conversations will be revisited in order to determine, okay, what's, what would be the best long-term solution and how do we go about that? You don't always want to say, well, you did a focus group, let's do another one. But if we need clarity around some of just those initial themes that were discussed, absolutely willing to do that and conduct a further like qualitative exploration. So staff survey results have been shared with campus principals. Each principal, they all attended a training. They were presented with data from, from example PowerPoint, because we didn't want to put any particular campuses data up and go through it. So we just made up, this is example data, walked through the PowerPoint. You can walk through this PowerPoint with your staff. That way they know that you've heard them, you've seen their results, and then meet with them as a team and discuss any areas from your particular campus results that come about maybe in a staff meeting or through some other way. There was a reference guide that principals were given, detailed the development of the survey items. We talked about where did, where did these things come from? Who informed this? Who are the stakeholders? What analysis was done? How do I interpret these results? How am I supposed to develop a reasonable goal? What would be strategy? So all of that was in a reference guide. And principals were walked through that. And then they each received their own campus results, similar to what we saw here. This was the district level, they received just their data for the campus level. And they are working on those goals and strategies. They will be put into their campus improvement plans. And I believe y'all will be looking at those at the next board meeting. So you will see in everybody's plan, there is a section related to teacher satisfaction and what particular factor are principals going to work on in order to improve at their campus. It may be delinquent activity at one, could be procedural effectiveness at another, strategic communication somewhere else. So they're going to work on what their staff communicated was the issue at their campus. So that's all I have for y'all. So I have any questions or comments?
Do I have any trustees with questions or comments? Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Fowler. I have a lot of questions, but I'm not going to ask them now. I'm, I'm interested in just a couple of overall survey structure compared to previous surveys, that type of thing. First off, the response rate over 30%. Seems like that's a really good response rate. I know in my company, it's, it's hard to get 10%.
I know.
I was curious though, going back to the previous survey that we had for several years, do you know what that response rate was? How do we look compared to that one?
I don't, but we can find out what that, what that is.
Okay. I was just curious if we're going up and down or staying flat.
Yeah.
And then the, the other question, I think overall that I had was, I, I recall in our previous survey, the, the scores, we, I think we got to a point where, why are we still doing the survey? Because we were literally tenths of a point off and we were saying, well, this is a tenth difference, so now we're, we're really going to focus on this area. But what you've provided here, we're at like a 3.5 cut out of five. Some fell below, some were right around there. So I, I think going forward, some of the things that I would like to hear is, and not necessarily now, but just moving forward, what those specific strategies are or targets. So we're at whatever, give any metric, we're at a 3.6. What, what's, is there a target? Is there a goal for this survey? I'm assuming that's going out again right now, because you said the last one was October through February in, in various forms or fashion. So I'm assuming that's what's happening now for this current year.
So October through February was the development of, of the newly constructed survey. And so all those, the focus groups and meeting with teachers or meeting with central admin staff or campus administrators, all of that happened in order to determine areas that we found were common across the different audiences. And then so, but the actual survey administration took place in May.
Oh, okay. Misunderstood. Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that's good. So then it, maybe that'll be reflected in, in the CIPs or in further discussion, what, what's our next, what's our benchmark to see how these things that you're talking about, not specifically, but as far as what those indicators would be to move that needle up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez, for the presentation. And I, I also want to thank any of our stakeholders, employees watching who actually took the time to take this survey. This is very valuable information. And as a board, you know, we take oversight very seriously. We really, we know how important it is to keep our finger on the pulse. We can look at assessment data all day long, but at the end of the day, this is really what I'm interested in. We need to make sure that we're doing everything we can within the realm of control to control those controllables as a district and take care of our people so that we can attract and retain our employees who work up or work so hard every day and wake up to serve children. And so we, we did receive a zip file of a lot of the data that you presented, and it is a lot to consider and pour over. We got this on September 29th. And in the meantime, we all were at TASSA-TASB convention in Dallas. And I, I want to just ask that we bring this back as a discussion item so that we have more time as trustees to digest the information and really synthesize all of this, because it is extremely important. And I, I personally would like more time to pour over the data. And I'm interested, I agree with what Mr. Raj said, I'm really interested in what the response rate was in past years, if we can still gather that. Even though it wasn't, you know, a, a large proportion, I do still think proportionally it's a good sampling of where, where our, our sentiments are at for each group. So I appreciate it, and I, I just want to suggest or recommend that we bring it back on a future agenda as a discussion item, once again.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Fowler. I, I tend to agree with, with Ms. McMurro on this. I, I think these results are really encouraging and I think they're positive and it's a good general overview. But as I'm listening and going through it, I think there's a lot of questions that we would want to ask and dig more into the details. And so I think this is, I look at this as this was a good, great overview of what's been done, and I know so much work went into it. But I might also suggest, you know, doing further discussion, bringing this back another time, but maybe vetting it through a committee. I don't know if it'd be governance or finance and accountability. And maybe there would be a follow-on presentation that results from that, based on the feedback and questions that the committee vets and is very, you know, the stuff that's really interested in. I'm a little worried at this level, we might spend the rest of the night asking our questions that are just super granular, that maybe going through the committee process and just a report out to the board would take, take care of. And so the next presentation could more address like specific concerns, I think, that the board as a whole might have with the committee members as a reflection of the board. And maybe also narrow and streamline it by sort of the, the sort of one-off questions that may just be of interest here or there to some folks, take care of that on the, on the front end. So I'd also be in favor of bringing it back.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. I do agree. I think we need a longer period to look at this and think about it and ask questions and get that information before we can really dive too deep in here. But we appreciate so much this information and all the time and work that you and your team did. But I think we do need additional time with this topic, and I will look forward to getting that information. Thank you, Dr. Lopez.
Thank you.
Next will be our pre-kindergarten programming update. Dr. Wirth.
Thank you, President Fowler. So as you know, we have launched a universal pre-K program here in Arlington ISD that we're very proud of. We've integrated STEM curriculum, and so I thought it'd be good to bring an update about how pre-K is going, the impact it's having on kindergarten as they move into kindergarten, and also a little bit about the retention. You know, one of the, the goals that we had with universal pre-K is that those students would be retained in our system and move into kindergarten. I want to start by acknowledging Dr. Orsini, our Director of Early Childhood Learning. She's been incredible and key to the success of this program. And then of course, Ms. Bustamante, who also works in specialized learning services. So Dr. Beal's here tonight to share the information, and everybody's here to answer questions. Dr. Beal.
Very good. Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, and Dr. Wirth. I'm excited to talk about the pre-K programming tonight in Arlington ISD because it happens to be one of my favorite subjects, and I think we're doing an exceptional job with it. So it's my pleasure to be here this evening. So first of all, I want to talk just through some of the changes that we've gone through over the course of the last year to give an overview of the pre-K programming. We moved to, from the half-day model to the full-day pre-K for model. And I think it has really benefited our students, and I think you'll see that as we go through this presentation. But free pre-K for all in the universal model, I think is something that we can be really proud of in Arlington ISD. We know giving our youngest learners a strong start is key to their success in school. We also have the Head Start Pre-K Plus program over at Cookin', and that program has really grown over the last couple of years as well. Another thing to talk about is the 2019 bond program that we had that allowed us to really have just state-of-the-art classroom refurbishments, redo our curriculum and align it to the pre-K standards, and really provide the same instructional resources to, and learning environment to all of our students, regardless of teacher or regardless of campus, every pre-K classroom in Arlington ISD. And if you've had the opportunity, I know, I know some of y'all have even walked through with you, in our pre-K classrooms, I want to go back and learn in those classrooms. They are bright, there are a lot of materials, our students just really have a learning environment where they can flourish in there. And our pre-K programming has really also focused on the curriculum alignment there. We do have new pre-K standards in Texas, and so that's been something that Dr. Orsini has really worked with her team on and is very committed to providing user-friendly resources to our teachers as they're planning. And I think that's one thing that they have done exceptionally well, and we've heard a lot of really positive feedback from the teachers. The other is the early childhood soci- social-emotional learning, the model that we're using, the curriculum, the tools that we're providing for the teachers to make sure that as our students come into pre-K, they're able to get that really strong foundational start regarding their behavior and just their learning of even just their, their executive functioning skills as a student so that we can set them up for success in pre-kindergarten and beyond. We also have really been working closely with the marketing and the communications department. As we've gone through this transition, I think it's been really important that we've kept our stakeholders, our community informed of what we have to offer so that we're reaching all of the, the young children across Arlington and making sure that their families know that this is available for them. So we've done a lot of marketing and communication around that. You'll see down there that big dreamers start small and really focusing on our STEM curriculum that we're, we've, we are providing. Dr. Orsini's team also provides ongoing professional development, which is even differentiated for our new and our bridge teachers in the pre-K. Think they've done an excellent job, and I've had the opportunity to go to some of that learning. But we hear a lot of positive feedback from our teachers. They've, have a new curriculum, and so that support that they've gotten through the professional learning has been instrumental to their success in the classroom. The other thing that we've really kept our eye on, and I'm, I'm going to give you some good data here in a minute to look at, is the pre-K and K qualification process. And just how do we identify the students that are in pre-K and then really proactively try to make sure that they see themselves as a kindergartner in our district and that they continue on through our system? So we've really focused on that retention. So let's look first at the pre-kindergarten enrollment. So here's a happy little guy celebrating the student enrollment. And this gives you some longitudinal data for our student enrollment, but I'm going to take you first to when we first implemented universal pre-K in the 22-23 school year. School year, you're going to see a jump from the prior year. And then I want to take you to the 2023-24. It's not quite apples to apples, because in 22-23, that's the snapshot date. And what I've given you in 23-24 is the data as of September the 27th, 2023. So we're still enrolling students and moving towards the snapshot date. And our principals would say, we are still enrolling students, we're, we're getting them every day, and we are happy to take them in in Arlington. So we know that number's going to continue to, to increase as well. So let's look at the survival rate. This is what I talked about just a few minutes ago. It's important as we bring our students into pre-K and they get this really rich learning experience and develop them as a learner as a pre-K, we want to keep them in Arlington. So right now, the survival rate, those students that were in pre-K and then went on to our kindergarten programming is 78%. Again, that's based on a September 27th enrollment date, so that may even continue to go up. That's something we want to watch and continue to proactively work on. So looking at our pre-K assessment data, we give our students that are pre-K students the Circle, the CLI, and this is a state progress monitoring assessment. We administer it three times a year on the On the slides that I'm going to show you, you're going to see wave one, wave two, wave three. The assessment, that's what they call it. In Arlington, you hear us call it beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. So I put that on there just for your reference. So the Circle CLI, we're going to look at the sub-assessments of rapid letter naming, rapid vocabulary, phonological awareness, math, social, emotional, and then for our pre-K4, the early writing skills. And I'm going to take you through some of that data on the next few screens. First, I'd like to look at the literacy for our pre-K students. I won't go through all of these, but I think what's really exciting is that you can see the impact that our programming is having on outcomes for students. So for instance, in the first set of bars, that's referring in, you'll see the general education side and then we also have the bilingual education side. So rapid letter naming, you'll see the first bar is the beginning of the year, the second one is the middle, and then the third is the third wave or the end of the year. And so you see the impact that the teaching and learning is having on our students throughout the year, both for our general education students and our bilingual education students. Our goal is 70% of on-track readiness for these students and you can see that we are exceeding that by the end of the year in each of those areas. And then we'll take a look at our pre-K math and you'll notice that the general education and bilingual education are combined because there's just one assessment regardless of the program that you're in. So that's why that looks a little bit different. Again, you'll see the progress of our students from wave one to wave two to wave three and the impact that it's having on their learning. When we think about kindergarten readiness, we have AISD indicators that show that we're on track leading to third grade proficiency. And we specifically focus in on rapid letter naming, phonological awareness, and math. And so I'm going to dig into those specific indicators a little deeper in the next few slides. The first kindergarten readiness indicators, this is going to be for general education. We talked about the rapid letter naming, phonological awareness, and math. Again, you see in each of those areas that our pre-kindergarten students are demonstrating improvement in their readiness in these areas, all three of them. And again, we break it down on this slide for our bilingual students. Give y'all a second to look at that. And then we'll look at the specific goals that we have around this. Our pre-K4 literacy is to increase the percent of pre-K4 students who are on track from 64%, which was our baseline in 2022, to 80%, which is our year four goal in 2026. So you'll notice in year one, last year, our goal was 68% because we were working our way to 80%. And last year, our students scored at 74% on track for the combined literacy indicators. And then for numeracy, for our pre-K4 students, our goal is to increase the percentage of pre-K4 students who are on track from 84% to 90%. Again, 84% was our baseline where our students performed in 2022. Our year four goal is to get to 90% in 2026. Last year, our goal was 86% and our students performed at 87%. Oops, I think I skipped this little guy. All right, so we've talked about our pre-K assessments and how our students are performing and now I want to transition us to kindergarten. And I think this is where it gets really exciting because this is where we can really dive into, look at the difference this programming is making for our students. In kindergarten, we're looking at our reading results from our M-class and M-class lectura. And what you'll notice on here is the orange line is the 2022, 23 line and then we're comparing that to the beginning of the year, 2023, 24, which we're currently in. And what you'll notice is the percent of students at the well below, as they've entered kindergarten and they were in pre-K, it's now lower and we've increased our above benchmark for our students in kindergarten. And that's the exact direction that we want to see. Means our students are coming into kindergarten more prepared, more on track and ready. And I think we see the evidence of how our pre-kindergarten has really prepared them for that. I'm going to dig into that. So here you can see the actual percents from, in 2022, 23, 49% of our kindergartners at the beginning of the year were at or above the benchmark versus this year, when they took that same assessment, there were 57% of our kindergartners were at or above the benchmark. That's in reading. Highlight that with a gold bar. All right, and let's take a look at math. You'll see a similar trend in math. You notice the orange line is the 2022, 23 school year and the blue line is the current one that we just took. Again, you're going to notice the percent of students scoring in the high range was greater than it was last year. And on the low side of proficiency, that has decreased. So our kindergartners came in more ready and you're going to see that again on here. In 2022, 23, 62% of our students were above our average and in 23, 24, we had 73% of our students above our average. And this is really exciting. So if you'll take a look at the gold bar, we're looking at our students, this is the, the subset of students that were in our AISD pre-K and now have taken the assessment in kindergarten. And this is for reading. So of students that attended an AISD pre-K, 31% were at benchmark, 33 were above versus the students in the left-hand column that recently took the test and were not in our program. You can see the 21% and 17%. So significantly higher for the students that participated in our pre-K programming in AISD. It's like we're really, really proud of that. So thank y'all for supporting universal pre-K in Arlington. And here, here's the difference in percentages. So 64% of the students that attended AISD pre-K4 and then took the test in Arlington were at 64% versus 38. And we're going to see a similar pattern here with math as well. Again, the students that were in our pre-K program performed better on the beginning of the year assessment this year. This will be data that we will continue to track throughout the year. So we're still inspired, we still have priorities and I know Dr. Orsini has a lot of big plans for pre-K this year as she's committed to excellence. So a few of those things that the department is focusing on. First of all, is the pre-K Kinder Bridge. And we know that when we can enroll a student in pre-K and then move them to kindergarten, we are setting them up for success. We will continue to focus on that and strategies to retain our students. They're going to continue with the summer impact and district-wide professional development. We are growing this program. We've brought kindergarten in with this team this year and so we know we've got to continue to pour into our teachers and support them so that they have the tools that they need to lead instruction in their classroom. So we're committed to continuing to do that. We're, again, receiving a lot of positive feedback about the quality of that professional learning, particularly in the pre-K and kindergarten under Dr. Orsini. We have a new and bridge teacher academy. I've, I've been able to teach pre-K kids before and, you know, it's, it's a whole different level. And so we want to be sure that we're providing teachers support, particularly bridge teachers and new teachers, with the support they need to really understand and implement developmentally appropriate practice in a pre-K classroom, in a kindergarten classroom. And so Dr. Orsini is very committed to making sure we set our teachers up for success and provide that support. We're going to continue to make sure that our curriculum is in alignment with those pre-K guidelines and continue to make sure that the resources that we're providing our teachers are in alignment and are presented in a way that are really user-friendly for our teachers and, and can make a difference to their, their teaching. Continuing to focus on the classroom learning environment. Again, I think one of the things I'm really proud of with the work we've done in Arlington over the last couple of years is it doesn't matter what school you're in, whose classroom you're in, you're going to get a similar experience and we're committed to a quality learning environment for all of the students. So they're going to continue to support that and the social emotional learning of our youngest students. It can look very different. It's always important for all of our kids, can look very different for a pre-K and kindergarten student versus a high school student's social emotional needs. So I'm glad that they're keeping this in the forefront as we're addressing those needs in the district. And again, supporting our teachers, we have many of our teachers in kindergarten are now doing the reading academy and so just making sure we're providing them the support to not only engage in the reading academy, but to transfer those skills back to teaching and learning in the classroom. And so Dr. Orsini is working closely with that so that they can apply those skills. Continued integration of AISD best practices, we know that that's important for student learning. And then continuing to look at the CLP, the Comprehensive Literacy Plan and Math Plan and making sure that that also addresses the needs of our pre-K and our Kinder students. So we're, we're continuing, that's a work in progress because we want it to be a working document that supports the needs of our teachers. So we will continue that. Continuing to evaluate the enrollment trends of pre-K and K. This is an incredible resource to our community and we will continue to work with communications and marketing and our, our campuses to make sure that we're letting our community, our stakeholders know about this resource for them. And then focusing on registering and enrolling our pre-Kers and moving them on up to kindergarten. And so this is really fun. These are the faces of our pre-K and all of the incredible experiences that we provide them each and every day in our classroom. I know Dr. Orsini is super proud of this and if you're ever having a rough day, just step into a pre-K classroom because you won't want to leave. It's just a lot of fun. We're committed to hands-on learning, a quality learning environment, our STEM curriculum and just all of the, all of the experiences that we should have in pre-K to, to get them off on the right foot with learning. So I thought I'd share a few of those pictures to give you a glimpse into our pre-K classrooms. This cute little guy. Any questions?
Do I have any trustees with comments or questions? Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, Dr. Beal, and thank you, Dr. Orsini and team. This whole thing just makes me smile and it's hard to believe that it was just a year ago. We just launched universal pre-K last year and when I saw that this update was going to be on our agenda and I first opened the presentation, I was thinking, I hope they're tracking the difference in Kinder. When we look at our students who completed AIC pre-K and who just came straight to Kinder because we all know, pre-K is not required. But we can see now the stark differences between kindergarten readiness, if you started with us in pre-K, or if you, you entered in Kinder. And I'm glad that we're going to continue to track that because it'll be interesting to see, you know, what happens over time and how that trajectory at the grade levels will be impacted. I just had two quick questions. So if you go back to the last slide, the one, I think it was the final slide with the collage? That really awesome collage of greatness? So I'm curious, and this might be a question for Dr. Orsini, what is the pre-K classroom showcase field trip? What is that?
Come on up. Good evening. We're very proud of the job that all our teachers are doing and of course, our classrooms, we showcase our classrooms across the school district for our veteran teachers and new teachers. So it's an opportunity for us to build networking between teachers, for them to learn in a different way besides the professional learning sessions that we provide to them through our curriculum and through all the instructional resources that we have provided to them. By allowing them to visit classrooms, they get an opportunity to also recognize the important components of a high-quality early childhood program. And pre-K and kindergarten, the classroom learning environment plays a very, very important role and we take that very, very serious. And pre-K students are continually doing hands-on activities throughout the day and we have set expectations of how we want to make sure that, that, that experience, right? It's for every student. So we allow teachers to visit other teachers' classrooms so they get inspired, they exchange ideas, and they can see from other teachers ways of how we can keep that high-quality program. So this is not the first year. Every year, we allow teachers to visit other classrooms and teachers get excited about that.
I love that and I love that Kookin' is on that list because really they're the original pre-K hub for our district and I just think it's wonderful. I'm sure that's very meaningful for the teachers. At the, this past weekend at our TASSA-Tasby convention, Ms. Fowler and I actually went to a session learning about what retains teachers, what is the type of professional development they, they get a lot out of, what, what has an impact on their performance and their pedagogy. And observing other teachers was very high on that list. And so I think this experience is phenomenal. I love that the professional development is, is involving our teachers as facilitators, it's in person, and it's not any surprise that you're getting good feedback about that type of professional development. I would love any opportunity for any of our teachers beyond pre-K to get this type of PD experience. I'm sure it's very meaningful to them. And my only other question was going to be, I'm looking at, if we can go back to math or reading slides where we're comparing pre-K students versus I went straight to kindergarten students. So if we're look, yes, thank you, that's perfect. If we're looking at the students who are well below benchmark, pre-K is very early in your school journey. This is no cause for concern, right? Because in kindergarten and then in the future grade levels, students can be progress monitored and we're, we're, I, I was curious to see what we're doing as far as progress monitoring and potential testing of students who get under that well below benchmark threshold.
Specifically in math?
Or reading. I, I was just curious what, what we do with, with that data at the campus or district level.
When I was speaking from the PLC meetings. And for pre-K teachers, we are very intentional in what we do with our data. And in fact, yesterday, we had a PLC meeting and it was a virtual PLC meeting as an example. And I invite all pre-K teachers to join me and my team for us to discuss the data. We had 104 teachers committed after-school hours that joined us last night and they were interested. They just came because they wanted to learn about that. And we look at the data, we celebrate all the success. And one of the things that I was highlighting yesterday, it's about like, that we cannot take for granted the success that we had last year. Okay? Every year, we have a different cohort of students and every cohort of students come with different needs. And for that, we have to be very intentional and very purposeful in how we plan. We cannot replicate the same model that we did last year just because it was a great year. Every year, we have a new cohort of students, a new group of students, as I said before, with needs. So during that meeting, we were talking about wave one from 2022, 2023 and wave one from 2023, 2024, specifically for reading and for, and for math. And we talk about what things we did last school year that definitely helped us to get to where we are and what things we could have done better because not by, because we achieve our success, that doesn't mean that we cannot get inspired to do much, much better. And we talk about how we intentionally have to use our time, our resources, how intentionally we're going to plan during whole group, during small group, how we're going to effectively be using our resources. And even during that time, we have our breakout rooms where teachers share their activities and what things they're trying new, how they're implementing all the things that they learn throughout the summer, during our summer impact program and through the new pre-K guidelines and of course, the curriculum that we just established last school year. So at the end, there last school year. So at the end, they were very excited. And one of the most important things is about not just only envisioning, but making sure that we are committed to those strategics, right, that we establish and that we follow up, and that we're very visible, right, and learning from them. Because part of the things that we are learning from our team is that in order for us, from academic services, to provide the support that teachers need, is that we have to be very visible, to listen to them, where do you need more of, you know, from, from the academic service team so we can continue supporting your, your, to our, your success. And being visible, not just only during classrooms, but during PLC meetings where we look at the data, that's when we learn how we could not just only keep our students on track, but keep providing that professional learning support to our teachers for them to help our students to be successful by the end of the school year.
Wonderful. And I'm, you know, one of the reasons why I was asking too, is I just hope, as, as much as we have an overemphasis on testing, I'm just hoping it doesn't trickle down to the pre-K and Kinder level. We do not want our babies to stress about any kind of assessment. So that's one of the reasons why I asked too. But if you look at well below benchmark, it is more than cut in half. If you look at students who came straight to kindergarten versus attended AIC pre-K, and to me, that is just as impressive as the top numbers because we are really changing the trajectory of this student's experience for the rest of their schooling with Arlington ISD, just by getting them a head start. So I hope that everyone involved in pre-K education in Arlington ISD, including our wonderful classroom assistants, because they do so much too, are just so very proud of these results. It, it just makes my heart leap. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. I don't have much to add in, in terms of what Ms. McMorrow said about just what we hope this program would do and the results we're seeing. It very much tracks what others have seen when they've gone and expanded pre-K programs nationwide. And it really is remarkable just how much it helps get students on track to be successful later. And just imagine where we'd be if we didn't have that and hadn't made that investment. My specific question is back on the slide, about the, I'm going to call it the retention rate for our kids and how many we hold on to.
Hopefully we'll survive.
Right.
We can't be surviving.
All of them are surviving that we retain.
Yeah. There it is. So I just was curious, do we have data on this for prior years in terms of how many students we retained making that jump from pre-K to Kinder?
We can look into that. We haven't really, we didn't evaluate that deeply because we were trying to, the reason why we, one of the strategies around Universal Pre-K was because we noticed that there was attrition happening, meaning kids weren't sticking around. But it, it wasn't related to the overall strategy of Universal Pre-K. Those were all qualifying kids. And so we haven't really dug into the question around, is there a difference if you're a qualifier versus non-qualifier?
Oh, okay. Can we go to the slide right before this one? Because it, it would, you know, it's really impressive just how much we've grown in terms of our pre-K enrollment. But I think it'd be especially impressive if we could say, even with the 78% retention rate, you know, if the prior years before 22, if, if those retention rates were, you know, even 80 or 90%, it looks like we do have some stickiness there. And there's, there's progress on that front. So I was just curious what the magnitude of that was. That's the only question I have. Thank you so much for the work that you're doing. And I know that this is, it seems like this is everything that we hoped it, it would be. And I just look forward to seeing how it'll pan out in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Will Banks?
I agree, Mr. Chapa. This is everything that we had hoped. I know our former superintendent, this was a big dream to offer Universal Pre-K, and it was a big dream of most everyone up here, I assume everyone up here on the dais, and mine too. My wife was a former pre-K teacher, and I remember fondly going to her class, except for the time they would always ask if I was her dad, or one even ask if I was her abuelo. But even those kids were precious. But having, you know, I am too curious of, on the benchmark, that Mr., on the slide you have a previous or after this one, or actually, no, no, go back to the first one. Let's go in order. Whoops. So you said that was as of the 28/68, that was as of the?
September 27th.
September 27th, not the snapshot date.
Right.
Do we have a projection of what we expect it to be as of the snapshot date? Do we have a good idea of how to extrapolate that out?
We can, we will have that once we get to the snapshot date. We're just not.
Which is?
The end of October.
Yeah.
Okay.
Last week of October. So we'll be able to pull that. We know that we continue to enroll students, which is one reason that's, you know, where the snapshot date is. So we can pull it at that time and see where we are.
And on the next slide, on the 78% retention rate, do we have any idea from surrounding districts or other data, public data of what a good quote survival, survival rate is into kindergarten?
I think I'm going to change that to retention.
Retention. I think retention's a better word. Yeah.
Not aware of data. We could look and see how many kids are enrolled in pre-K one year and how many pre-K kindergarten students are enrolled in the next year. But in terms of like student to student by ID, which is how you have to do this, I'm not sure we have that. I think the, the interesting, we could probably reach out to some of our colleagues. There are a couple of districts that are our neighbors that also do Universal Pre-K. There are very few, but there are a couple, and we could probably ask that question. But you have to code it to the actual students who stay rather than just cohort sizes, yeah.
Yeah. So Ms. Beal, Dr. Beal, if you go where you dive in on the kindergarten readiness slides, the charts on reading, where it had phonemic, that, yeah, that one. So this is, you know, the rapid letter naming looks great. I'm not an expert in early childhood education. I'm just curious why in phonemic awareness, when you get to the end of year, that hasn't really changed? Is it because we're early in the ability of most kids to acquire phonemic awareness?
Dr. Orsini, I'll probably lean on you for that one. Just because she knows the specifics of that. That's what she provides. Yes. Okay, one more time. So your question specifically?
So the, in the phonemic, you know, we noticed like on, for instance, on, on rapid letter naming, a great growth curve from beginning of the year to end of the year. But on phonemic awareness, is that flat? Is that normal, that kids at that age are just, don't acquire a lot of phonemic awareness from the beginning of the year to the end of the year?
In the CLI assessment, there are some areas where there, the result is up what we call like composite, where we evaluate the skills of our students in different areas, right? So like, I'm just going to go as, for example, like when we're doing a liridation or like, for example, rhyming. So in order for kids to develop all areas, yeah, it may look kind of like, it may be easy, but at that, at that level, there are some areas that it, it, the development of the, of those skills, it, it could be, I don't want to say challenging, but you will not necessarily see the, the, the growth, right? Specifically at the end of the school year, as big probably as like when you're in kindergarten, because the social emotional and all the areas.
You're good at identifying the letters by then, as you can see from the previous chart. So that makes it, so that's not, nothing to be alarming. Our teachers are still doing a great job exposing them to phonemic awareness.
One of the good things in Arlington ISD is that we also have a pre-K three program, which we cannot take that for granted because not all school districts are providing pre-K three services. So a lot of our students that when they come to pre-K four, they already have that foundation, just as for example, Kookin Elementary School. And we have about like 20 schools, elementary school, that are providing pre-K three services. So we already are having kids are coming to pre-K four already with that foundation because our pre-K three teachers are using exactly the same model that we are using in pre-K four, which gives that alignment. So when they're coming to pre-K four, that group of students help us a little bit with our, with our scores.
Perfect, perfect. Now on to the slide that Ms. McMorrow, we're talking about, talking about the growth from our pre-K four cohorts that go on to kindergarten. That's phenomenal growth. And that, again, that, you know, we, like, the state doesn't pay for our universal pre-K, right? So we're, we're using money. Fortunately, we were able to jumpstart this program with SRF funds. The silver lining from COVID is that we're able to really give a head start to our, our kids. And I think I'm all for continuing funding this. But I think it's imperative that we, in the next year's legislative agenda, we really push hard to get funding for Universal Pre-K for all of our students with the state legislature because this data proves the need and the benefit to our students. And, and, and this is the start of creating a top-notch workforce by the time they graduate from high school. We, we, I have no doubt we're going to have a bigger, more workforce-ready force by the time these kids that get to go through Universal Pre-K graduate. But my colleague, Ms. Haynes, had a great question. I'm going to give her credit for, is even though we didn't have Universal Pre-K, we've had a long history of pre-K students. How have we tracked those cohorts all the way through that critical juncture of grade three where, you know, in, to see what kind of impact it's had on the ability to read by third grade and even beyond? Have we tracked that? And I'd be really curious to see that data.
We haven't pulled data specifically that looks at pre-K kids who follow that through line all the way to third grade versus basically the performance of third graders who went to pre-K versus the performance of third graders who didn't attend pre-K. But we could pull that. We haven't done that.
Yeah, that'd be good data to have. So, but again, thank you. This is great data. Thank you both.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Fowler. I echo the words of my colleagues. It's excellent. It will be great to be able to see in, in general, in this specific cohort, to follow them through as far as that third grade literacy, for sure. So looking at the numbers, you, I know we're not at the snapshot yet, but as far as the, those that we retained, compared to new ones, it's about 500 new ones that we picked up. I'm just curious, I don't recall, what is our capacity? What can we, how many can we hold?
Do you know our total capacity? We'd have to calculate that.
That's actually something we're evaluating because we have a volume of students that initially register who don't come. And so we're asking, we're trying to analyze two questions. Where are the kids that initially registered and why don't they show up? And then where is the space that they're wanting to go to? That there's, where is the space and where does it not exist? What I, what we're preliminarily asking ourselves is, is there a desire for certain students to go to certain schools where there is no space? And can that space be created? Or are they completely at capacity at those schools and they need to be redirected to another school, but the family doesn't want to, doesn't want to go? So that's actually a question that we're diving into right now to try to understand that, that basically the variance that's there and what's actually causing it. And we should probably have a, a more comprehensive answer here in a couple of weeks, but we're asking that question right now.
I, I do appreciate it. I'm also curious, obviously, I, I realize that it wouldn't necessarily be a direct correlation or realistic, but curious if we filled up every spot that we had across the district, what that number is as well. Thank you. That's all I've got. Great stuff.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. What an incredible opportunity that we're offering for our youngest learners. Who would have thought we would have this right here in AISD and free to the, to the families? I just think it's an incredible opportunity. And I know we're going to see the success of these students and be able to follow them and see great results. So thank you all so very much for this presentation, and we're very excited to see their future. Thank you.
And if it's okay, Ms. Fowler, I just wanted to also recognize, there's a small army, and I mean a small army, that work with Dr. Orsini, who have turned this idea into a real reality. So I know they're not here this evening, but we want them to know that we recognize them. We know their work would not, this would not be possible. Yeah. So thank you for your leadership, Dr. Orsini. And thank you to all of you watching for the work you're doing for kids. It's making a big difference.
We now come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Forsberg, do we have anyone here for the non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have three registered speakers. One, our second speaker is virtual.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. I will now call on Demetrius Kilgore. Demetrius Kilgore. All right, our virtual speaker, V.G. Brooks.
Ms. Forsberg, I will now call on Demetrius Kilgore. Demetrius Kilgore. All right, our virtual speaker, V.G. Brooks. I will now call on Demetrius Kilgore.
Delighted.
Demetrius Kilgore.
Hello, am I on?
All right, our virtual speaker, V.G. Brooks.
Yes, I am to the president of the board, to the board members, and to the superintendent.
What do I tell her to turn off? Turn your, turn your volume off, please. Ms. Brooks, if you'll turn your...
Are you able to hear me?
We can now. Go ahead. You'll have two minutes.
I was asked to mute my, my livestream, so I've done that. And I, to the president of the board, to board members, and to the superintendent, my name is V.G. Brooks, Virgie Grant Brooks. I wrote a letter to the members of the board and to the superintendent about discipline for my student, Melania Montgomery. And I won't, I won't read into the record, but I would ask that it be made a part of the formal record, the email that I did send to you to ask you to review the discipline that was given to Melania and provide some background to the family, our family, to let us know how to better support her in correcting the behavior. Because part of what we don't understand is the measures that were taken and why they were taken. And we've asked, and we've gotten somewhat inconsistent answers, so that I won't rehearse that. We've talked about that specifically on the campus level. But what we would ask is if the information that would help us to help her could be made available to the family as soon as possible. Again, I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. We now call on Mr. Richard Weber. Welcome, Mr. Weber. You'll have two minutes.
Richard Weber, Arlington, Texas. At the last board meeting, this board approved a performance improvement plan, which had many, many subsets of failure greater, being greater than 50%. That should be screaming at you that this problem needs to be investigated, not just rubbed along. These individual problems need to be investigated and solutions done. It seemed like the employee survey that you all just heard tonight, they actually did some investigation and came up with solutions and are going through the process. I don't understand why the same thing wasn't done for all these planned greater than 50% failures. It doesn't... It doesn't make sense. Now, as far as this board and complaining about the T E A, there's a reason why the T E A had changed their testing procedure. You all had a grade of a B, and yet you've got more than half your students failing, half of those super failing. There's a bunch of grade inflation because of things like getting credit for proceeding or improving or things like that that quite frankly doesn't belong there. We live in the world where you, you fail or you're successful. Students need to realize they either fail or they're successful. You don't get credit for improving. And quite frankly, you all shouldn't get points for that. It's been grade inflation that you've been a B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mr. Chapa?
Thank, thank you, President Fowler. I, I have a, I believe, Mr. Akabom, we can ask informational questions of staff? Can we do that here? I have a question for, for Dr. Wertz. The, the STAR test results and the accountability results, are there, they're scaled correctly? Scaled, right?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
So the, they're not graded like a quiz assignment in a class where if you got six wrong out of 10, that's a failing grade? It might be because it's a scaled test? That may be an A?
That's correct. They don't actually assign the cut points until after kids have already finished the exam.
So the, the sort of objective score of a STAR test is not an indication of a pass or a fail or, correct?
That's correct.
So someone could actually have a low objective score and yet have a very high scaled score?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. It's now time for our superintendent's report. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. I'd like to share some information about some exciting news that's happened since the last time we got together. It was a great day in East Arlington Monday morning as we broke ground at the new junior high school that will replace the current Carter Junior High. Thanks to everyone who helped plan the event, the fine arts students from Carter Junior High were outstanding, and it's going to be a wonderful fall of 2025 when we open the doors to that brand new school, and I think we even got some dirt in some people's eyes maybe that morning. Our senior staff also, we are continuing our bimonthly road trips for our weekly meeting, and we visited Owlesley Junior High this week. And I want to thank Owlesley principal Amber Price and her outstanding staff for hosting us. It was great to visit so many teachers and to see so many engaging students that were learning and doing meaningful activities in class. I have to say, visiting that campus, there is a lot of structure and care for each of those students. And last week, I was able to take part in a great event at Foster Elementary for Make a Wish North Texas where we surprised a pre-K student, Aiden Borrego, with a trip to Disney World with his family. Now, Aiden, this, this, this brought me to tears, which I know doesn't surprise anybody, but Aiden was diagnosed with leukemia when he was one, and his wish was for a trip for him and his family to take his mom and his dad, his two brothers, who also go to school there, to go to Disney World, and they're going to have that opportunity later this month. And so I just want to thank the Foster Elementary Principal, Jaclyn Burden, for making the assembly happen. It was great to be part of it. His cancer is in remission, and it was wonderful to see the, so many kids in the cafeteria just cheering for him because, like I said, it was a complete surprise. It was awesome. And one of the biggest stories last month on our looped-in blog was the news that Owlesley Junior High's seventh grader, Ari Richards, was, had qualified for the National Junior Olympics last summer. Ari qualified after her sixth grade year at Bryant Elementary, and her road to superstar status was not typical. Her P E teacher at Bryant was the one to let her know how fast she was, and that prompted Ari to sign up for a track team. And it was a clerical error by, by a coach that accidentally got her signed up for the distance, the 800 meters, and it paid off. So congratulations to Ari. We're really proud of her. And we also want to give our congratulations to Spear Elementary teacher Sarah Buska, I'm sorry, Boukza. Sarah was surprised at an impromptu assembly to learn that she had been selected as the first recipient of the CBS Texas Crystal Apple Award for Outstanding Teachers. Sarah's story was featured on CBS 11 last week, and she was inspired to teach by her mom and her grandmother, who are also both teachers. And she's also inspiring others as Spear's teaching assistant, Laketa Williams, is furthering her education, and she plans to follow her mentor's footsteps in going to teaching. And then you saw a little bit about this tonight, actually. Our early childhood team put on another spectacular event. It was last week, they hosted the first-ever pre-K kindergarten STEM spectacular at Webb Elementary, and it was a great way for our littlest learners to showcase all the STEM knowledge that they're learning in the, in the classroom. There were superheroes, there were reptiles and obstacle courses. It was a great night, and I want to once again commend Dr. Jaclyn Rossini and her team for making it so special. And then last but not least, I want to thank Arlington Police Chief Al Jones and his staff. They invited me to participate in Tuesday night's National Night Out event. So we rode around in a trolley through the city. We had a chance to visit three different neighborhoods, and it was just great to get out into the community and meet families that are going to school here. And it was a great reminder also of what an outstanding partner on the Arlington Police Department is. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Do I have any trustees with reports? Ms. McMurro?
I just wanted to briefly commend our, our team, our board and our interim superintendent. We had 100% participation at this past weekend's Tasa Tasby EdCon, and one of our trustees, our board vice president, serves on the Tasby Board of Directors, and we had trustee Will Banks at our delegates' assembly. And our board is, is very involved at the, at the state level when it comes to governance, and we're also very committed to learning from other districts around us, and I just really enjoyed the experience with you all. It also gives us a good opportunity to bond as board members, and so I just, I love that our whole team attended and made the most of that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Any other reports? Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Thank you, President Fowler. In regards to the employee engagement survey, we did have a few requests. Dr. Raj requested that we see previous year's response rates, if possible, with the employee engagement survey. And we're also wondering, he was also wondering, what are our targets, targets and strategies at the district level in response to survey results? And Mr. Trustee Chapa asked to see survey results analyzed by the committee level, and then we will bring, bring, bring the employee engagement survey results back for a future discussion item at a full board meeting. In regards to pre-K, trustee Will Banks asked that we can start tracking or, or see already tracked, previously tracked data, analyzing our pre-K students as they go up to third grade, particularly in the area of literacy, to see if there's a correlation. And trustee Raj asked, what is our pre-K 4 total capacity? If every campus space was filled, or sorry, if every space was filled district-wide, as well as how much actual capacity remaining at specific campuses?
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, Madam President, and I would just like to add, after getting that wonderful update on the universal pre-K program and all the work that went in, there's another program that I think has gotten shortchanged because of COVID that was rolled out and fully implemented over those years, and that's our Gifted and Talented Program. I think it's long overdue to give recognition to those folks and a wonderful program, and just getting an update programmatically of where it is and what kind of results have we, similar results have we seen from that program as we're seeing with our pre-K program? So I'd like to make that formal request for a future board agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Any other trustee? Seeing none, it is 8:58, and we are adjourned.